Okay, it is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for September 17th for the city of Minatrista. First on order, I'd like to ask that you join me in Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, welcome, and just a friendly reminder, if you have cell phones or electronic devices, please put them on airplane mode or on silent so they don't disrupt the proceedings here. And next, I'll be doing some introductions. I'm gonna start with on the end. We have sitting in for Chief Falls this evening, we have Sergeant Pat Cummings with us, welcome. Next to him, we have our city attorney with Canadian Graven, Ron Beatty, and then our community development director, David Abel, our finance director, Brian Grimm, and then we have our city administrator, Mike Barone. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Pam Mortensen, Mike Molliter, John Chomperlin, and Shannon Bruce, and then next to Shannon is our engineer with WSB, Allison Fousky, and we'll be doing some more introductions in just a little bit. And then we have our city clerk, Chris Lindquist, and then our public works director superintendent, Gary Peters, and our director of administration behind those two is Cassandra Tabor, and then also with us this evening, also from WSB, is Adam Gavois. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Barone, and he can actually make a formal introduction of our new people here.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I would like to welcome tonight our two new city engineers. Our senior project engineer is now Allison Fousky, she's replacing Paul Hornby, and then Mr. Adam Gavois is going to be our assistant city engineer. He's also a project engineer with WSB Engineering. I think I'll just turn it over to them real quickly to just kinda introduce themselves and give a little bit of background on their work in the engineering field so we can get a little bit more information about them. So Allison.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name's Allison Fousky. I have almost 20 years of experience in municipal government, most recently was 12 years with the city of Chan-Hassan. I joined WSB and Associates about a year ago, a senior project manager, and since that time, I've been in addition to senior project manager for a few projects, city engineer for Shorewood as well. One of the things that I really like about municipal engineering and what I like to bring to this role and to the city of Minatrista is capital improvement planning. I really enjoy doing that, enjoy the process and meeting the residents and talking through the process with residents, staff, and the council on those opportunities. In addition to my roles as senior project manager and previous to that, I've also been extensively involved with the American Public Works Association, most specifically with the diversity committee as the committee chair for the past five years. So it's a pleasure to be here and a pleasure to serve your community.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Gavois.
Gavois. Madam Mayor, City Council, pleasure being here. My name's Adam Gavois, as Mike said, with WSB. I have just over five years of experience, all of those at WSB. My primarily experience is in municipal engineering. Started out here in Minatrista, spent a lot of time in the city of Lakeville, also in Chan-Hassan on projects. One thing I'm looking forward to is working really closely with public works staff and making sure that construction goes smoothly. I too am a member of American Public Works Association, and I enjoy working with them on advancing public works, so I look forward to working with all of you guys as well.
Thank you, and welcome as well, Adam. So that concludes our introductions, and next we have approval of our agenda. Is there, are there any changes or additions?
I'd like to make a change or an addition in our council, or in our information packet. We got a notice, a memo, that Paul Hornby was leaving and that a new, the two new engineers are gonna be assigned to the city. I think that's a significant enough event that it warrants a discussion by the council, and I'd like to have an agenda item. And in anticipation of that, I asked Mr. Barone to provide the WSB contract and asked him to provide that to other council members as well. So I'd like to just have an agenda item to discuss all that, because there were some things that I think the contract needs attention.
Well, what I would suggest is that if the council is interested in that discussion, that we add it to a future agenda item so that everybody can get up to speed and can, and staff can prepare a presentation as well as give council members an opportunity to review any information that they would like.
That's fine, if we could put it on the next meeting agenda.
Well, again, if that's the council's pleasure.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the process that transpired if that heads off a discussion in the future, but if the council would like to discuss in the future, we certainly can as well. I thought the information that I provided in my cover letter along with the letter that came from Lee Gustafson from WSB was fairly explanatory. I did have a chance to speak with all the members of the city council, except Mr. Chomperlin, who was out of town on Friday, made a point of calling everybody to let them know about this transition, so. But again, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
And the reason I wanted to have a discussion with the council members is when I asked for the contract, the contract is dated 2012, is the contract that we have with WSB, and it hasn't been modified since. And there are clauses in the contract that are still active that haven't been renewed. There are public works services that are in the original, in the 2012 contract that we don't do anymore, that it was just taken care of by sending a letter to WSB saying, you're not gonna do this for us anymore, but the contract has never been amended. So there's, and I don't mean to take time now, because it's not on the agenda, but there are some things with the contract that I think need attention.
Again, as the mayor stated, if that's the interest of the council, we can certainly bring it back and discuss it.
Maybe what I would suggest is that it be brought back to a work session, and prior to that, that our attorney review it and see from a legal standpoint, and also staff review it and come back to us if there, if a change is needed. If a change is needed or some alterations need to be made or tweaked, then that could actually come back at either at a work session or on a council meeting.
I just think having a contract that's dated 2012, it needs review.
Well, from what I understand, that that's a pretty much a boilerplate contract that WSB uses that we have reviewed and had no issue with. The original contract was, as I mentioned in my email to council members today, was signed in 2005, and then up until 2012, until we made the adjustment with Mark Erickson as director of public works for a period of time, as Gary Peters was coming on board. You know, we transitioned in and out of that particular job and then re-signed the contract in 2012. So the next contract you get, maybe there's a few minor things in there, but again, it's a pretty much a boilerplate contract, so there's probably not gonna be a lot of things that are gonna be significantly different. The fee schedule that was in the 2012 contract gets updated every year by the council, beginning in January every year, so.
So why don't we have the 2018 fee schedule with this contract? Why is it 2012?
Because it's in the regular fee schedule. So you approved the fee schedule in January for the engineering services, and we'll do it again in January 2019 for the fee schedule. So I mean, that replaces the previous year's fee schedule.
Well, it would be fine to put it on a work session, I just think it needs some attention.
Again, just have our attorney review it, if there's some updating that needs to be done. It could, I mean, if, like you said, if it's just minor tweaks or whatever, or maybe removing that phrase with the public work superintendent, maybe it just comes back under consent agenda.
That's very possible, but like I said, that whole process, the bringing Mark Erickson on as director and then taking him off as director was agreed to by both sides and approved by the council, so.
Yeah, it does.
We don't even have that position here now, so it wouldn't apply anything the contract would apply.
Yeah. Okay, all right. With that, is there approval, are there any other additions? I'm assuming we'll get a Halsted Road Drive, a Halsted Road update, under staff reports?
It might be a joint effort, but we can.
All right, yeah, okay. So with that, is there approval to, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we have no special presentations, so we'll move on to our persons to be heard. We have two people signed up. We'll start with Mr. Ned Dow on Marina Drive. You wanna come forward?
Yeah, I'm Ned Dow. I'm one of the original property owners on Marina Drive. My wife and I designed and built the house there 20 years ago roughly. And when we moved there, and I don't think, and by the way, most of the neighbors, all the neighbors know about the meeting. A number of them are out of town, one's a flight attendant, two are the ones on vacation in New York with their kids or something, and the rest have families and kid activities that they trust me and hand them and agree with most of what I say. There's also some Marina Drive residents yet to be identified because of the development of the Babler property. And I think that's one of the things that brings us to a point. When we first moved there, most of us moved there, we weren't naive that we realized there'd be high school traffic, maybe some noise and whatever. And I served on the West Duncan School Board for 13 and a half years. And unfortunately, I developed, while I was on the board, we developed the fields that are on the west side of that first entrance to Marina Drive. And if I'm not mistaken, cities are the arbiter of parking spaces. So if I wanna build a strip mall, you're gonna tell me, oh, you gotta have so many parking spaces, because I've run into that either with customers that are building projects or church board when we go to do a remodel, we gotta have so many parking spaces. So when I was on the board, I never thought about parking spaces. So in my time on the board, and somebody might have been, I don't know how long ago we've been here, we sold the property where the old high school was, downtown, and we moved the district offices out to the high school. We moved the football field out to the high school. We developed those fields that are on the north side of Sunny Field and the west side of Marina Drive. And I don't honestly remember at this time if we had any discussion about parking, and if we did, it's they can park in the high school lot, because we probably figured those would be alternating schedules. I really don't remember. Since then, there's a sheet of ice been added. Now they've got the performing arts center and an activity center. And Marina Drive, over the years, has been overrun with parking, rude, and vulgar people, trash, you name it. There was one night on the Friday night football game, I went to leave the cul-de-sac, I knew the football game, and of course, I go down to the cul-de-sac, make a right, and have to make a left. I could not leave the cul-de-sac, it was so badly packed up on that corner to make a left. Now, my first concern with all this is safety. If we needed an ambulance, a fire truck, or somebody just had to get out for some reason that they couldn't, we've had people parked up in the cul-de-sac bad enough where it's gotten, people parked in there and they can't, they have not more cars than the cul-de-sac will take, so instead of parallel parking with the curb, they diagonal perpendicular park. And I live at the end of the cul-de-sac, and I've had cars with both their front wheels on my grass. There are times when, currently, there's a family with a number of kids, several families with a number of kids, and when there's a lot of activity on those fields, they pull their kids off the street, because people come zoom in the cul-de-sac, make a U-turn, and go back and park. I think it was Saturday, I will say, the district put up signs the last, a couple of times recently, no activity parking, and that helped a great deal, but I also think that was a football, Little League football thing, that they let their people know they'll park there. So I came, I was coming down Sunny Field, went to make a right turn on Marina Drive, and of course, you've got a bunch of pine trees and stuff that block that intersection. And I saw something through the trees, and I slowed down a lot sooner than I normally would, went to make the right, and here comes somebody zooming on Marina Drive using the incoming traffic lane as a left turn lane. And if I had been going a little faster, we'd get out of here.
Mr. Dow, I'm gonna interrupt you.
Okay.
So we have a three-minute limit, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, I forgot to tell you, that's my fault, I'm sorry. So we've given it, we know the situation.
Okay.
So a couple things, we are gonna be doing a road project on Sunny Field, yeah, Sunny Field, and we're talking, we're going to be talking with the school about that. I don't know if we can incorporate some parking, this will be part of the discussions on Sunny Field, and they're also putting in, are you aware, a new parking space, I believe it's up by the.
By the water tower.
By the water tower.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, and there's like about.
The problem you have is, the parents don't wanna walk that far.
Well, I understand.
My solution is, you close all the gates on Marina Drive in, and they won't park there.
Well, and so we're gonna, we'll have to have this as a work session discussion, because we can't make that kinda decision tonight, so.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't know there was a timeline.
No, there is, I'm sorry.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, Mayor and City Council, I did have a chance to talk with Superintendent Kevin Borg last week on Friday, and he called me for one issue, and then I brought this item up since I had heard that Mr. Dow would be potentially coming tonight to talk about this parking issue. So I let him know that, you know, we're going to be looking at Sunny Field sometime in the near future, and we'd like to be able to sit down with them and talk about the issue. So hopefully, we'll be able to get together here in the next month or so to kinda talk about that with the school district, so we're committed to work together, try to find a solution for that. Thank you.
Yeah, all right, all right. So we have another person signed up, Tom Notch. Again, so I don't forget, we have a three-minute limit, and we don't take action this evening.
Thank you. Getting old, we gotta get the cheaters out here. But I'm Tom Notch, I live in 1250 Morning New Drive, and I've lived here since '85, so a long-term resident. And I got a copy of the, Minatrista's promoting now, proposing adding a new water tower, and the city, according to the minutes in the packet there, was looking at awarding soil testing for the project, SEH for about $11,000. And I've been an engineer for, I graduated in '77 from Marquette University, I was actually in my class, but SEH, you know, does not do soil testing themselves, they simply farm it out, a soil testing firm, in this case, Braun Intertek. And apparently, they must be putting a nice markup in there, and maybe WSB is as well. But it seems real strange to me that I only see one bid here for the soil testing. And I've run my own engineering firm for 35 years since '83, and worked closely with numerous geotechnical engineers and hundreds of projects, and I saw this bid that seemed ridiculously high to me, and I talked to a sales engineer with over 40 years of experience, who I'd worked with for a good number of years, and just sent him a copy proposal and asked for his thoughts on it. Here's what he said, "Holy cow, $10,000 for one boring to 40 feet plus a report? This is our ripoff." He's got an explanation. Says, "Plus, should not drill one boring at the site, I say minimum of two borings. Did SEH ever hear of variations in soil conditions? Next, $11,000 for one boring to 75 feet? Another ripoff. Typically, it might cost $50 to $60 per foot to drill a boring, say another $500 for a good lab testing program, not just a moisture contest they say they will do. Then, let's be generous, allow $1,500 for the soil report. So, for the tower option, two times 40 feet equals 80 feet, times 50 bucks equals 4,000, plus 500 for lab work, plus logs, plus 5, 1,500 for report equals $6,000 tops. And keep in mind, this $6,000 estimate, that my friend is telling me, he's had his own firm for a number of years, many, many years of experience, that six grand is for doing two borings as opposed to the single boring that SEH's proposal is for. And it's really, it's high time for Minatrista to seriously research the option of hiring their own professional civil engineer. I've talked to you guys about this earlier as well, and I think it would be cruel to do that and look out for the fiscal dollars of all of the residents here. The fact that the city has not bid out professional engineering or legal services for that matter since 2004 is totally unacceptable. I see that WSB was paid over 100 grand during the month of August, and I have records indicating that for a number of years, they were paid over a million bucks. I saw in '14, they were paid 1.3 million. It's time to have the city hire their own engineer and not allow us to be ripped off repeatedly by the current firms we're contracted with. Please look into this, thanks so much.
Okay. That concludes, we have nobody else signed up, and that concludes our persons to be heard, so we will move on to our consent agenda items. They consist of, A, approve our work session meeting minutes from August 6, 2018, approve our work session meeting minutes from September 4, 2018, approve our regular meeting minutes from September 4, 2018, a resolution to approve claims, and a resolution to approve a step increase for Nick Redkey with public works maintenance worker.
I would like to pull 4C, approve regular meeting minutes from September 4, 2018.
Okay, anybody else, anything else?
I'd like to pull 4D, approve claims.
Okay, so we have remaining A, B, and E. Regular work session meetings from August 6, work session meeting minutes from September 4, and approve step increase for Nick Redkey in public works. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve A, B, and E? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll start with you, Ms. Mortensen.
Okay. I would like to take three minutes of uninterrupted time to address a few statements from the regular meeting minutes from September 4, under consent agenda 4A and 6A. Number one.
What page are you on? I'm sorry.
It's the, I don't know the page, but it's under the consent agenda 4A and 6A. Number one, 4A, approve work session meeting minutes from August 6, 2018. Notes as follows, "There was discussion on whether other council members referred to quoting levy percentages at the August 6, 2018 meeting. Staff was directed to listen to the tape again to determine if any other council members quoted a levy percentage and bring it back to the minutes to the September 17 meeting. My comments, in my review of the video from the 9-4 council meeting, Ms. Bruce specifically requested that staff re-review the 8-6 audio tape to see if someone else did quote levy percentages. Her quote, I know someone did. My name was specifically mentioned. Staff was directed by the council to re-review the 8-6 audio tape to see if Ms. Bruce's comments were accurate. On September 5, the day following September 4, city council meeting, I requested a copy of the audio tape to review the meeting conversation myself to verify if any council member quoted a levy percentage. After listening to the audio twice, I confirmed that the staff was 100% correct that other than Ms. Bruce, no other council members quoted a levy percentage at that work session meeting, and her quote was inaccurate and falsely stated. Number two, 6A business items, notes as follows, "In the third paragraph, the meeting notes state that Ms. Bruce commented that she expressed that in her experience, once the preliminary levy is set, it never comes down from that point. My comments, at that meeting, I requested staff to pull the numbers from past years and bring back the actual preliminary budgets in comparison to the final budgets. The actual comparison of preliminary budget to final budget increased percentage is as follows, 2015 preliminary levy percentage was 4.1%, final levy 3.2%. 2016 preliminary levy 7.3%, final levy 3.8%. 2017 preliminary levy 3.2%, final levy 3.2%. 2018 preliminary level 5.4%, final levy 4.3%. Ms. Bruce's comment, once the preliminary levy is set, it never comes down from this point, is inaccurate and falsely stated. The truth is, 75% of the past four years clearly shows that the levy, final levy, did come down from the preliminary levy budget. The one year that it did not change in 2017 remained at a 3.2% increase. Let me remind you of another quote or statement made by Ms. Bruce at the 8-6 meeting. That is, her comment, that with the 2.5% growth increase and a 2% inflation rate, she would be okay with a 4.5 increase. The one year that did not change is lower than the percent she's comfortable with approving for the 2019 budget. Leaders promote mutual respect and civility. Highly effective governing bodies are comprised of members who honestly know they don't know it all. They take advantage of opportunities to learn, perfect their skills by listening to others, respecting opinions, and working as a team to face issues and create common sense and fair solutions."
I would like to respond to that, if I may.
I'll give a few minutes, we don't really don't.
I'd like three other, a minute.
Just let me finish my sentence. I don't want this to get to be an argument or a battle. I know Ms. Mortensen was responding to the speech that you gave at the last meeting, so I will give you a few minutes.
I'll keep it brief.
And I will ask that you be respectful, so, thank you.
I think this is campaign grandstanding, and the audio tape was not provided to all council members, so we can't verify or say what was on there. We haven't listened to it, but I do.
We certainly can get it. I got it, I called and requested.
Uninterrupted, please, thank you. When I said that another council member quoted a higher percentage, there was reference to the higher option on that audio tape. And I will find it, I'll listen to it, and I'll come back, and I'll find it. And I wanna correct you, I never use the word "never." And so taking things out of context again, and grandstanding for political purposes is unattractive in a leader.
Okay, now I'm gonna stop you.
Fine.
Because now you're attacking a fellow council member, so I'm just gonna.
I think I was, I think I was just attacked unfairly.
Ms. Bruce.
With innuendo and misrepresentations.
Ms. Bruce, and you did the same thing last meeting, and we all sat here and said nothing. Okay? Ms. Mortensen didn't defend herself, she went, so, a couple things I'm going to clarify. An audio tape is available to anyone, any council member and the public, if they wish to have, get it. They need to come to City Hall, and they can request it. There may be a cost to that, to the public, but to council members, there is no cost, so you can do that at any time. As far as, so that's all I'm gonna say, and we're gonna move. Um, as far as, so that, that's all I'm gonna say, and we're gonna move on. So with that, um, is there, are there any corrections then to the September, uh, I'm sorry, fourth council meeting minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the September fourth council meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we had, um, our claims. Mr. Maliter, you have some questions on the claims?
Yes, yes, I do. Um, on here we have refunds of deposits to CalAtlantic Homes uh, for some temporary certificates of occupancy. Uh, the last, there, there are actually three addresses here, forty-eight ninety-six, oh, forty-nine forty-one Grand View and forty-nine sixty Grand View. Uh, I'm okay with the first two addresses, so it's the first three items. The two items, forty-eight ninety-six, and the second one for forty-nine forty-one. Uh, however, the last one, forty-nine sixty, um, as of about nine o'clock this morning, they still haven't put a yard in yet, and I would like to withhold payment, uh, for that particular component until they have actually wrapped it up. And so that's, that's what I had to say.
Okay. Yeah, is that-
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, that, that certainly, um, any incentive that we can give to make sure that the SAD is done, I can, if it's the direction of the council, we can certainly do that and translate that message to, to them. Um, I will give an update on our staff reports at the end of the meeting here too. We did meet with them. We do have somewhat of a schedule from them, so I can give you an update. But we are okay with you going ahead and, um, actually what we would prefer logistically is if, if the council's okay with this, go ahead and approve this as part of the claims, and we'll, we as, we would hold the, the full payment, the full check. We would hold, um, logistically with finance, it would be a little bit easier to hold that check and not give it to-
For all three properties.
For all three properties, until which time there was SAD done, because they, they all combined into one bill.
Actually, that would be, yeah. Yeah, that would, that's a good idea on that. So I would suggest that their motion be approving the claims with direction to staff to withhold that one check until all three properties are in compliance.
So moved.
All right. All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion has been made by Mr. Maliter and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Five oh. So we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to business items. Um, this is the soil boring proposal that Mr. Notch talked about. Um, who is presenting, Mr. Miles Jensen?
I'm gonna start, and then we'll have Miles Jensen come up and talk about the proposal. Um, so if council notices that in the packet, generally when we have a proposal like this, we will have a resolution to go along with it to authorize that. And I know we've been talking as staff about, and it was suggested by, um, Mayor Whalen that, you know, she was a little concerned about the location of the four lots that, uh, Mr. Abel talked about at our last meeting of the, that are just north of those tents courts, or I guess they're east of the tents courts. I, it was north of the, on the picture, so, but I think east or west is, is correct. Um, but nonetheless, you know, we're in this kind of, I think, to me, and I've explained it to a couple different people today, I feel like we're in this chicken and egg kind of thing with where are we on, on doing this particular soil boring proposal? Um, as the council probably remembers, we had the issue come up with a potential site for a water tower back in late twenty sixteen that didn't get through. Um, we had an issue with HOA covenants, et cetera, that kind of made that particular, um, location of a water tower fall apart. Uh, we also had a number of residents, I would say twenty particular residents, might have been more people, but I think they represented twenty households that came in and said, "We don't want a water tower there." So obviously, that particular night, that kind of puts us where we're at right now. We're still looking for sites. Um, but we've had other issues out there. We've had water issues that are, um, before we started our water treatment plant process construction, that had come up from time to time. We also had, once the, um, uh, plant was online, we had a failure with, um, a pump, then we had more permanganate in the, in the water, if you recall that. So I know these people kind of got their antennas up on what's going on with our water situation in that part of the, uh, Minutrista. So what I'm afraid of is I don't want this, I didn't want to put on your, um, a resolution to approve the soil boring and then just send the soil boring truck out, 'cause I guarantee you, you all who begin calls shortly thereafter, "Where the hell? Where are you putting this water tower? How come nobody told us?" So my proposal tonight is to have Miles talk a little bit about this, talk about soil borings in general, regardless of the cost from our guest speaker, uh, audience speaker tonight. But we should talk a little bit about that, because I think maybe a good first step before we pick a site is to talk about that a little bit more in regards to informing the public about maybe potential sites, so they're aware of it. I don't want them to, to go overboard. The chicken and egg part is, we don't know if the tower or the at-grade, uh, water tank will even work there, because we don't know the soil boring. But if we send out people to do the soil borings, the public's gonna think that that's where we would. So I don't want you guys to catch a lot of flack for that. I would be more comfortable with maybe having a, um, meeting of, of engineers, excuse me, engineers and council members with the public, so they can ask you questions and say, "Here's what we're considering. Here's maybe two sites we're gonna park. We have the one site that, uh, Mayor Whalen shared with us last week that she kind of thought was a better site, but nonetheless, I want to hear what you guys have to say about that." So I'd rather take a step back. We can talk about the soil borings. I hope that Miles talks about that here in a second. But I'd like to talk about it and see if it makes more sense maybe to do a public meeting first before we start diving into where should we put the tower.
I would definitely agree with having a public hearing, and also-
No, we don't have to have a public hearing. We were thinking about an open-
A public meeting to make sure that-
A public open house, yes.
The public can come and find out about locations, and also I'd like them to, I'd like the city to have information on what building a water tower is gonna cost them when they look at their water bill in the future. So I think all those things are important before we spend any more money with soil borings or anything like this, and I, I'm willing to listen to, to what we need to do in the future. But I think before we spend money on anything, I think the public needs to weigh in on this, and they need to understand what the costs are.
Well, we've talked about the cost, uh, Mayor Council, but I want the-
We have, but the public-
I get that, but I think, I think, I think you should keep in mind that this is gonna be a two point one, two point three million dollar project. And if we do one soil boring at ten thousand, or two soil boring total, I mean, that's a drop in the bucket compared to the size and scope of this project. So I don't want us to get hung up on ten thousand bucks, or eight thousand, seven thousand bucks, whatever Mr. Notch said. I don't think that's, it's significant money, but I don't think in the grand scheme of things it's that significant, when you're looking at ten thousand dollars versus two point three million dollars.
I, I disagree. I, I think-
Um, I would like to say something first.
I was answering Mr. Brony. I disagree, and I think a few thousand dollars is significant, and it adds up, and it might be ten thousand here, eleven thousand.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, both of you. Excuse me, excuse me. We're gonna talk about one thing at a time. You're talking about soil borings, and you're talking about an open house, and you're talking about public hearings. We're gonna focus this. We're gonna talk about an open house first. Forget about the soil borings, forget about the dollars. We're gonna talk about whether or not we want to have an open house prior to authorizing soil borings. I feel we should have the open house first. Invite the public in, inform the public, give them information as to the process that we're going through, the potential, potential possible sites. What are we looking at? We're looking at a ground storage facility. What are the costs involved? How is that going to affect their bottom line, their bill, not just for the Hunter's Crest people, but for the entire community? Because Hunter's Crest people aren't the only ones that are gonna be paying for this. It is the whole entire water system, so everybody should be invited. Everybody can come in. We can share this information. We can hear what they have to say, and make sure that they're aware that we're not trying to hide anything, that we're not trying to do anything, um, under the radar. We want to make this open and, uh, to the public. So I agree with you, Ms. Bruce. We should do that first. That's what I'm, I'm thinking. Um, if the council feels differently, so be it, but I think we should do the open house first.
I do have a concern. I, I hear what you're saying, and I don't entirely disagree. However, if we're going to be looking at a couple different sites within LaFleur and/or elevated versus at-ground, you have, you run a little bit of a risk here in that if you have an open house to talk about this, and everyone comes back and says, "Yeah, we want a tank completely buried at this site," and soil borings come back and say, "You physically cannot do that." You run the risk that you've promised something you can't deliver. And, and I, it's, it's a, I don't think there's an easy answer to this, because I, I get it-
Chicken before-
Right, chicken before you. Um, you, you want to be able to make sure everyone's informed and involved and so forth, but on the flip side, it's been my experience that when people hear something from the city, it, it conveys a sense of officiality and, and I won't say done, but, um, that there's been some study put into it. We have, but tha- that's my concern, is that I, I don't want to say, "Okay, yeah, we can do an underground storage facility at Site A," and then, you know, two months later go, "Sorry, uh, I guess we physically can't do that." So I don't know the quite, the right answer to that question. That's my concern.
Well, the right answer is to do the soil borings, but I know there's an inherent risk of that, so.
Right.
And I, I agree with you. I, I think, but we have to be very careful not to make promises that we can't deliver, and I, I think you certainly don't go into a public meeting and say you're going to build an underground storage tank. You, you offer the options, and you talk about what the options are, and the decision-making process and how that's gonna happen.
The underground storage, um, so one, there's different options. Um, we're gonna call it at-ground storage or a, or a tower. And with the, with the at-ground or underground storage with the soil borings, that will tell us how far underground it can be. We can always do an, a storage, um, a, not a tall one, but a large one at-ground, you know, above the ground. It's not gonna be one hundred and seventy-five feet tall. The borings will simply tell us how far underground we can go. Will this building be six feet tall above ground, or will it be twenty feet tall above ground? That's maybe what, and that's what we would depart, that's the information that we would share with the public. We're thinking about potentially at, underground. If it can't completely go underground, it might be this much, or it might be that much. We can maybe have some, uh, pictures depicting or showing what the various ones would look like, so they can visualize that. Um, you know, so there's some options, and you're correct, we don't want to make, um, promises. We just want to give them, um, the, the options, or the information that we've been given. Does that make sense? It, it is a catch twenty-two, so, um, what do you do first? And I, I really feel we need to inform the, the public first.
I think we still should have Miles come up and talk a little bit about the proposal from, uh, the soil borings and kind of what that entails. So at least you have a understanding of what it is, where, after, I think we're just trying to find the groundwater depth, which is again what Mayor Whalen was just discussing about how deep, if at all, you could bury this storage tank. So if you want to talk a little bit about it, Miles, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, Council, staff. So the, uh, the proposal that was included in your packet was to, was two options. One, and really the, the difference between the two is, is merely the depth. If we're gonna do an elevated tank, then we would go down deeper to understand what the soil properties are there. Primarily looking for, to answer the question, how are we gonna support this tall shaft and, you know, wall of water on the top? Do you need to have pilings? I think that's the big question.
So Mr. Jensen, with, um, at-grade or underground storage tank, wouldn't, you don't need pilings for that?
Not, not likely, but there's always that potential. I mean, if the, if it were a, a bunch of heat, you know, you're, you're not gonna be able to float much of anything, but we would, we would find that out at the same time. But generally, no. I mean, that, we, we don't think of it like that.
Is it because the weight is spread out more? Okay.
Exactly, exactly. So, yeah, so, so that's really the difference between the two proposals. And the gentleman that spoke was right. We, we asked Bron for the drilling and then the actual, like, soil lab work, but our geotech people write the report and all that sort of stuff. That's, uh, that's really what it's about, but, and then, so on the ground storage reservoir, other than the soil properties, are, the, the biggest thing we want to know is, is where's the water level? 'Cause recall from the stuff we did before, we have to be two feet to the inside of the tank from the established groundwater level, and that will determine whether, you know, we could put it underground, partially buried, or just put it right on top of the soil.
So, I think, man, so it, it's two feet from the bottom of the tank to the top of the water table.
Correct.
However, even a, a storage tank is gonna require some kind of footings, right?
Correct.
So I, I can't imagine footings being any less than a four feet in Minnesota, right, frost line?
Right. Well, the, the, the footings will go down, you know, to take care of the frost line. It's surprisingly, they don't go down much deeper than that on a big ground storage reservoir, primarily because you generally have this huge area that's-
But I, you gotta go down at least two feet. It's gonna be more than that, right?
Yeah, we, we would go down, you know, like I said, you know, below frost, so we don't have the tank-
So it's bump four feet.
If it's at ground level.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Yes. Even, yes.
Yes.
And then we would want to have a little buffer in the tank.
Sure.
Not only are we going down, you know, to cover for the frost, but then we're gonna want to have that buffer of, of water, so that we can make sure the pumps can draw a lot of, you know, and use-
Right, the whole thing.
The, the whole tank. Certainly we'd want that.
So, so effectively, you have to be quite a bit more than just two feet above the water table. You've got to be at least in six, eight feet above the water table, all in, to make it work. I mean, if you went out there and found a spot where the water table was within a couple feet of the, the top, that wouldn't be viable.
Yeah, so I just wanted to be clear on this. So the inside of the tank where the water actually resides would be two feet above the known groundwater level. And so you can hold that irrespective of where the footings are. The footings might be lower, you know?
You can put the footings on the water table.
Oh, sure.
You can.
Yeah, we can stick that right down.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Without pilings?
Yeah, you can just, you know, evacuate the water, and as long as you got soil, the bearing pressure here, you're good to go. So, yeah. I mean, if it's nice, hard, sandy soil, and it just happens to be underwater, oh, that's okay.
Okay. All right, that's part of that was, yeah, okay.
It's a good question. Thanks.
Testing your engineering knowledge, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, I think that was really what I wanted to, to share with you about it. So for the ground wa- the ground storage tank, two things we're really looking at. The most important one is brown to the groundwater level, so we can figure out where that, that thing might sit, should you build that type of stuff. And then the other one, of course, is, you know, bearing pressure. And then with the elevated tank, the most important one is the soil, you know, bearing capacity. And, uh, so that's the, the proposal that is, is in front of you. And for the time being, I think it gives you kind of a good idea of what you'd be looking at to understand how you could use this site. Now, you know, the geotechnical guys will tell you that if they're boring six inches around, then that's the only thing they know about the soil in the vicinity. So people like me like to stretch that and say, "Wow, what about a hundred feet that way?" They'll say, "No, can't do that." We always want to do that, you know? Really? You gotta do another one? So the point here is, if you have two sites that are pretty substantially, you know, far away, you can't necessarily count on one boring the vicinity for the other.
So in other words, if, if we're looking at potentially two different sites in the park, we, we'd have to do two different borings?
You, you, you should count on that, or you should expect that.
Okay.
And certainly, we don't want to spend any more money dating holes in the ground. We absolutely have to, to get the right information.
Okay.
That, that's, that's true, sir.
Okay. And then, so besides the storage tank, then there's also the, um, the pump building or the, right? There's a little building for-
Yeah, just for the ground storage.
Right, right.
Yes.
Okay. And, um, have we, so, David, do you have, do you have the site map of the park? Could we just see that?
Sure.
And then can you point out where the, where staff is looking at, um?
Right there. There's four lots in that area.
Right, so there's-
Is that west, David, or? North.
That would be north, okay.
Two to the furthest, right? It would be potential, occasionally. I even hate to mention that, but-
Again, potential.
Yeah, potential.
So when we were talking about, um, underground, we're, I'm gonna say underground storage, that you can actually- So, when we were talking about um underground, we're, I'm gonna say underground storage, that you can actually basically cover up with sod or whatever, I, my first thought was right, um was in that very bottom corner, kind of way, way down there, somewhere. Now, that's wetlands, I guess, so it couldn't go there, but if it could go in the green area somewhere in there, and it wouldn't even be noticeable. I mean, is that an option, or would that cause problems?
Um, well, I don't know the problems, but I, one thing that keep in mind is, we, you just pointed out, there's a wetland area
Next to it.
That's a really, really deep ditch.
Okay.
That water level is generally, you should think of it as being kind of flat through there. So that gives you an idea as you maybe move by it, you know, I'm not familiar exactly with that spot, but as you move in that direction, unless you're, you know, going uphill quite a bit, that water level, you can kind of get an idea where it might be, so.
Correct, yeah.
So, so, so it may not be underground.
Okay.
So this is probably more for David, is that site that you pointed out, is that uh generally speaking, a little higher elevation than for the stuff?
Where we're proposing?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, you're 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 going uphill, uh definitely, this is up, much more uphill, higher in elevation, there is a pond behind it, but there's quite a bit of elevation going down in that pond as well. Based on what Miles just said, and what I, what I have knowledge and history of the site, I would agree with what Miles is saying and assuming about the water table. My assumption would be, you're gonna hit water much quicker here than you are up here.
Yeah, yeah, knowing that there's a wetland back there, yeah, sure, okay.
Can I ask a question about that number of site there? You see where it's green along the top edge, is it, is it, is any of that categorized as wetland now?
Uh, it's, it's a, yes.
My concern is here is just for the fit of the tank.
Yeah.
You can't, you know.
Not on the top, on the top of that?
It's up, it's up
The wetlands are beyond.
But not within the boundary?
No, not not within that boundary, no, those were, those are platted, those were supposed to be homes, because there's four platted lots there, it was supposed to be built on, so they were intended to be built on, residential houses.
How deep is that, about a hundred and fifty feet?
Yeah.
But, and then each lot is about seventy-five to a hundred feet wide?
Yeah.
So roughly three to four hundred feet wide, by about a hundred and fifty feet deep. Now, here's one of my concerns, is of course, there's immediately adjacent to the park, it would be to the um east, wait, to the west, to the west. Um, there's homes, so how disruptive would that be to these homeowners to have these buildings? I mean, during the building, obviously, there's gonna be some pretty disruptive times.
I mean, it's, think of a commercial building being built or something like that, and there's, you know, gonna be a hole and all kinds of farm work and trucks and
Right.
Concrete trucks and all that sort of stuff, so, yeah, yeah, so.
And not to trivialize, whoever the homeowner is, I don't know, so I'm gonna apologize ahead of time, but, you know, at some point in time, we gotta find a spot, put in a tower, so. It's next to them, it's next to them, like I said before, they're great neighbors, they don't throw parties late at night, they don't make a lot of noise, so. Uh, and and as we saw from an earlier set of photos from Miles when he was talking about um at-grade or below-grade water towers or water storage, it sort of, it can look pretty nice, you know, you can make it look like it's a house. It's not a house, but you make, so it doesn't look like a square building like our water treatment plant, so I wouldn't want to particularly live next to that, but when we have a water treatment plant, we don't have anybody living next to that, so.
Okay, so, Council.
Well, I think based on what we're seeing here, um that site with the four lots seems to be, uh, from an engineering perspective, uh, the most viable. And so if we're going to have an open house for the public, that's probably what we would want to put out there as what we're considering, um, at least then people know what we're looking at. The other site doesn't sound, I mean, I guess the other site farther down, uh, let's think of the town without the four three. Okay, that that's what I think I can offer here, is that if we have a a public hearing, that we could, we'd at least be able to say, this is the site we're considering, subject to, so.
Okay, um, the land across from the tennis court, Site One, that, we don't own that land like we do the other one, right?
Well, right now?
The land, uh, for Site One?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah.
That is ours, okay, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I I do want more for Miles, um, in in a water tower scenario, uh, obviously, you're supporting a lot of weight in a much smaller area, which to you would say you'd probably end up doing pilings if there's some, you know, some standards as well. Uh, what, how many pilings do you think would go in to support a water tower?
Oh, gosh, I I wish I could tell you offhand, I, I don't know, um, you would be, you know, well into the thirties or so, I mean, there's a lot.
Okay.
And 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 so, I I'm just finishing up a two-million-gallon tank in in Lakeville, and that one didn't need pilings, but the footing for that tank, because you only got to get it way up in the air, the footing is massive.
So like really deep or just wider?
Yeah, everything, it's, it's huge.
I'm sure it is.
I think there's more than a thousand yards of concrete just in that footing.
But that's a two
Two million, but my point is, is those, so when you, even when you you don't have, you know, piles, you still have
A big footing.
Because you're right.
So much weight.
Well, you have to
And it's also leverage, Jerry.
But that, that part is in the the estimate that I shared with you.
Right, I'm just, I'm thinking
Just not the pile part.
Just because if you're doing pilings in a commercial setting like this, you're basically using a pile driver, right, it's not like homes where you do it with the screws. So, tech while being disruptive, that would be really disruptive, I mean, digging a hole is one thing, and that's kind of annoying, but pile driving is when they're done like that, that's when the pictures fall off the wall.
Yes, yes, that's more underlying, right?
If that's the case, we might have to look somewhere else.
Right, right.
So I don't think they're married to this particular site, but seems like the next logical best location. Could have a public meeting and then
So.
I'm sure people that live next to are gonna hate it, but, you know, at some point in time, we did hear back in the day, why can't you do a ground-level storage tank, we did hear that from residents. Um, well, here you go, so, yeah, maybe it wasn't in the old location, but nonetheless, you know, we we researched that, and I think that's a viable option.
What's the, uh, what would be your anticipated timeframe like on that?
You know, that's a good question, I think we'd have to probably get back to you on that, but I, I think sometime yet this year, we'd have a public meeting, you know, depends on how much money you want to spend for soil borings, but uh, if it's cold, it's gonna cost a little more, because it's cold, you gotta thaw the ground up, but after that, once you get through the first couple of feet, you know, it's all the same kind of work, so. So.
Realistically, I don't know if you'd get the capacity to do public hearings yet this year. We've, we're already into, let's call it first month of October, right, and we still have, we have the holiday season coming up, we also have public hearing on our budget, there's just a lot that's coming up yet.
We've just got limited meetings, so, I mean, we can talk about it, come back to Council with some needs, recommendations.
I would say, why don't maybe um staff could come back with some dates, recommendations with dates? Uh, obviously, we'd have to coordinate with with you and your firm and make sure that you could be here to answer the questions and show us pictures of what it might look like, um, things like that, so, okay, all right. So we won't, uh, I don't think we're gonna be approving this tonight, because I think we'll be talking more about it in the future, so. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Miles.
All right, um, so with that, we'll move on to our administrative items, we have staff reports, uh, city administrator, Mr. Brony?
Um, yes, just a couple of items, um, we actually have just four meetings left before the end of this calendar year, we have two in October, October first and fifteenth, and then one in November and one in December, the dates are escaping, I don't know the time ahead, but the one is the second Tuesday of November?
Right.
We normally go first and third, we decided because of election here that we don't like to meet on a Monday before the election, so we moved it to the second week, the other thing that factored into approving our schedule back in the day was if you do move the one that's the week of the elections to the second week, then you've got a meeting a week after that, so we've generally, end years pass and cancel it, so. A little more proactive, we picked the second week because of elections, so that Tuesday is?
November thirteenth, because November twelfth is a holiday.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so number tw- November twelfth is the Veterans Day holiday, it's actually Sunday, but you celebrate it on Monday, that again, is kind of like Labor Day, Memorial Day, you just move everything back.
Right.
So we're at Tuesday, and then the um final one will be December third, so it's the first Monday.
So we'll only have one meeting in November?
Yes, one meeting in November and then one meeting in uh December.
So we got lots of stuff.
So we have two meetings and a regular two meetings in October.
Correct, and then, by the way, I will not be at the October one meeting, I will actually be out on vacation that week. Um, and then the final thing is just, that also that same week is our conciliation court process with our former building inspection firm, Mr. Abel will be attending with the representative from um Kennedy agreement for that conciliation court process.
What day is that?
Wednesday, October third.
Okay.
I think I gave that to you earlier, just do this.
Just a reminder, yeah, okay.
I think that's all I have, David's got, uh.
I just have a question, I just, um, because I've had several calls from um residents regarding uh roads. Are we having a road discussion at our October first meeting or work session?
You will be having, I won't be here, but yes, you will be having a discussion for us.
That'll be on the agenda for either the work session?
We, I mean, we definitely can, I mean, I think last time we solidified the plan for twenty nineteen pretty well, you know.
Can we just put it on again, I just want to go over it again and make sure that we're on track and that we understand what we're doing?
Yeah, and then Gary and Allison actually met last week to talk about some stuff related to roads, so we're, we're trying to get her to hit the ground running here on this, so. And Adam was in on that as well, so.
Okay.
So they've been working on things, and uh, we hope October one works, so.
Okay, okay, and Mr. Abel?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of Council, as mentioned under Claims, I'd give an update on the Red Oak development. Um, we did have an opportunity to meet with the developers on September tenth to talk about the status of the unfinished lots and the grading that was left to do on the site, um, and so they did get out there and do grading corrections and touch-ups, that that was last week, that has been completed. Um, landscaping started today, um, I did go out and confirm that, I s- they were moving along nicely, I suppose, until that rain hits, unfortunately. Um, but they are planning on getting all the landscaping done this week, um, and then uh next week, Monday, they will start putting irrigation in sod down, hoping to have sod uh complete by October fifth is the the goal.
I think that's a two-week window for that.
A two-week window for sod, again, it's with weather, you saw what happened today.
Right.
It's kind of weather-dependent, but um they're they're um wanting, they want to get this done just as bad as we and the residents out there do as well. Um, actually, um, I think they rattle off, and one of the biggest issues, as we talked about earlier, is the company's been bought out a couple of times. There's that, been about five or six site managers in the last year and a half, which basically attributes to what's, we're seeing as a problem out there, is no one, no one knows where things are at, and and no one's been watching the site on the developer's end of things, so. Now they do have um a new gentleman on board who's getting everything under, seems to be getting everything under control, everything he's been telling us. We've been checking it out, and they've been following through on it, and I'll certainly tell them what Council did with Claims, um, and extra incentive to to keep things moving up there.
So there were seventeen, I believe, expired temp seals, right? So those are the seventeen that they're concentrating on?
Correct.
Okay.
For for sod and grading.
And they anticipate having all seventeen finished by Octo- barring weather?
Correct, I mean, the schedule, my question in the meeting was, were all of these homes gonna have sod by the time winter came, and they said absolutely, that's their goal, and this, the schedule now
Okay.
Is 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 ten to five, some of these are in different stages, so, you know, they may trickle, but it's definitely their goal to have sod on these, all the temp seals by the time snow flies.
Okay, so let's keep track of it.
Yes, um, thank you, uh, one thing, I want, and you may not have answered to this, but um, they have consistently had a problem out there keeping their trees alive, I don't know if they just have a bad, that, they have bad soil and they don't have a good match with the trees. And so they've gone through and done, have done one round of tree replacement, um, but do you know, as part of this, that they're going to be replacing the dead trees, part of this to?
Absolutely, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, they have to do that ongoing, on, you know, on an ongoing basis, there is a, you know, there's a, you typically, there's a warranty on the tree, so I'm assuming they're taking, trying to take advantage of that with their
Okay.
contractor, but we also too, once we actually, um, you know, we're monitoring it as well to make sure that they're they're uh staying alive, and and there's a warranty period after acceptance by the city as well.
Is there, I I hate to ask this, but is there a warranty on the warranty, and what I mean by that is, when they replace a tree and that one dies, if they replace it again? Because I honestly, they're on their second batch of trees in some of these cases, and it's not just one or two, it's about thirty percent. Uh, it's a real big problem, some of those yards, overhanging trees are dead, or or two, two leaves left, and it isn't because it's fall.
Sure.
So, I I just, it's, I I'm assuming that they will do the right thing and get them replaced.
Yeah, I I generally, yes, I mean, that's
But just something to keep on your radar, is that, that's probably more of an issue than you would normally expect to see out there?
Sure.
For whatever reason.
Two other things quick, Madam Mayor, I do need a council member to attend the Planning Commission meeting next Monday, the twenty-fourth, and we are going to have a Parks Commission meeting on October ninth, so I need two volunteers.
I have to check my schedule. I know I, oh, I have to, I have to check. I know I can go October.
I have to check my schedule, too.
I can do October ninth.
Okay.
Did you say the twenty-fourth?
Correct.
I could do the twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't need to check my schedule?
What's on the Planning Commission agenda?
Uh, Planning Commission will be um a conditional use permit for a restaurant on Highway seven.
Oh, okay.
Park in middle of the restaurants, and um also, uh, Trivers Park has a potential land acquisition on Little Long Lake.
Okay, all right, all right, um, any other staff reports? Gary, anything?
I can give you a quick update on Hallstead.
Okay.
Um, I tour almost every day, so I kind of know what's going on out there, so.
And you get multiple calls every day.
Madam Mayor, Council, at this point, all the pavement patching that was required by them before um, final paving operations was to commence, has been completed, uh, the roundabout is complete, done, um, looks a lot better this time around. All milling has been completed, and all the um water issues with the moving the hydrants, the hydrant that was leaking and a broken gate valve has been replaced um, and um fixed, um, all the milling, like you say, has been done in all the driveways as well. Um, driveways are being completed as they pass along where they can as they are paving, others are going to be patched afterwards, so they have a better match line. Um, they did start paving today on Farm Hill at the cul-de-sac, um, farthest in heading out, they did echelon paving, which is a basically almost side-by-side paving both lanes at one time, so you get a really nice seam, uh, you don't get a cold seam, get a hot seam, they were coming through. Um, two-thirds done before the rain hit, approximately five hundred and seventy-five tons of blacktop went down. Um, it is to be picked up again once the rain moves out, which is not looking unfortunately till Friday. So, but um, the WSP inspector out there did talk to them, and we are on the list, as soon as they, weather cooperates, they will be paving again on our project.
That's what they say.
Yep, well, this is Midwest asphalt, so.
Okay, this is the asphalt.
This is the asphalt company, so, um, the other driveways, I say, will be done afterwards, there's been some driveways completed already, uh, some of the bigger areas. Um, finished grading and then seeding is to follow the completion of the paving at this point, so, there's not a lot left to do out there, there's some here and there, but uh I say I check it up on it every day, and I meet with the uh inspector on site to see how things are going every day, so, it's moving along, thankfully.
Yeah, so this, I know seeding is another issue that hopefully get, getting that in before it gets too late in the season, so. Um, if, if it gets in so late, then do they come back, or do they guarantee it or warranty it, or how does that work?
They will most likely, if it gets to be too late in the season, they'll put a dormant seed down, I would suspect. I would suspect, and I'm sure there'll be some warranty issue with it.
Okay, 'cause, um, I was looking at this, a schedule that we were given way back when, and they were supposed to have finished the paving, um, actually, a month ago. So, um, at some point, are we, are you gonna inform, I mean, how do, what, these liquidated damages, I mean, when do we talk about that?
Madam Mayor, Council, uh, we're keenly aware of that, we're watching that. When everything is said and done, we'll know what the liquidated damages are, because they're accruing every day. Um, when that's, when it's done, uh, we will sit down and have a discussion.
All right. Okay.
So, the meter's going.
Yeah. Okay, um, thank you, Gary, and also, um, thank you for all the time that you've been putting into this, I know it's been a lot. Um, we've had a lot of people call and complain, and, um, because they've been frustrated with the, with the lack of work that's being done out there by the contractor, not by us, so. Uh, with that, um, we'll move on to council reports. Uh, I really don't have any, I just wanted to make sure we got updated on the Red Oak and Hallstead Drive projects. Uh, I was out of town due to a death in the family, so, uh, with that, I'll pass it on to Pam.
Um, I did attend the WCC meeting last week, and they just recently updated their website, it looks really, really nice. And I just talked to Cassandra about trying to post some of their events, um, on our website as well. So, they're trying to get more of that, uh, connection with sponsors. They had a speaker, um, that, uh, was very interesting, and it talked about how they, WCC can, uh, work more within the community to get higher recognition, other than just sponsors. So, it was really a great conversation, and I think it will be beneficial. That's all.
Uh, unfortunately, I was not able to make the last LMCD meeting due to a last-minute work conflict, so I have no updates to provide at this point.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay, did you go to the Pioneer Star Creek meeting?
They canceled it.
Okay, so you didn't go?
No.
All right, so then, um, any other reports? I don't think so. So, again, thank you, everyone, for joining us, and, uh, hope to see you again soon. Let's see, October second, right?
No, the first.
Oh, it is the first, okay. October first, next meeting. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Mr. Maliter seconded it. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Have a good evening.